Welcome to the Exeter Regional Cooperative School District Budget Proposal Meeting. Before we begin, I'd just like to go around and make sure that everyone introduces themselves in the room, our administrators and our board. I will start. My name is Bill Gothier. I'm the Chair of the Exeter Regional Cooperative School District. And Bob, would you like to go next?
Good evening. I'm Bob Hall. I represent Kensington.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Masucci from Exeter.
I'm Melissa Lyons from East Kingston, the Vice Chair, and I have Tammy Gunst on us via Zoom on my screen from Stratum.
Yeah, Dawn, that would be great.
Dawn Bullins, Representative from Exeter.
Hi, Amy Ransom from Newfield.
Carly Scherf, Exeter High School Student Representative.
I'm Colette Provost. I'm the CMS Representative.
I'm Lachlan McCauley. I'm the CMS Representative.
Great. And then if you don't mind, the administrators?
Mike Monahan, Principal at the High School.
Drew Berstow, Principal at CMS.
Pam Carr, Principal at Seco School of Technology.
Michelle Bodo, Director of Exeter Delt Ed.
Molly O'Keefe, Director of Finance.
Sonya Roche, Special Ed Director at CMS.
Lisa Moore, and Special Ed Director at the High School.
Great, thank you.
Heather Murray, your Human Resource Director, and in the back of the room is Jason Hills, Director of Technology.
Jason, all right, thank you. I appreciate that. So tonight, I'm going to let Molly kick us off. When Molly is done, we'll open up for public input. Please, if you'd like to say something, please walk up to the mic, say your name, where you're from, speak loudly and clearly into the mic, because this is being recorded, so that does help us. We will listen, and then we will, we look forward to comments. Molly?
Okay. So tonight, we're going to talk about the FY26 proposed budget for the Exeter Region Cooperative School District. This is a needs-based budget that we built with building level and central office administration. And it is a very lean budget. So if we look at how we ended last year with a fun balance, we ended with only 1.4455% of the appropriation unexpended. So if you think about that in your annual household, if your budget is, say, $80,000, that would mean you had $1,156 remaining. Now, if you had an unanticipated boiler repair or an unanticipated heat bill, that would immediately put you in the red. So we are presenting a very, very, very tight budget, a needs-based budget, that was, had input from almost everybody in this room. So to start, we did review it with the Budget Advisory Committee, and we do have a member here tonight who wants to say a few words. I always have to do this, sorry. My name is Trish Cox. I'm representing Newfield's on the Exeter Region Cooperative District Budget Advisory Committee. Our Chair, Heidi Hansen, from Stratum, sends her regrets from being sick. I also wanted to recognize from Brentwood, Erin Steckler, from East Kingston, Jamie Saucier, from Exeter, Meg Bateman, Roy Morissette, and Ben Adams, from Kensington, Sarah Fettress, and from Stratum, member Rachel Jefferson. On behalf of the BAC members, I'd like to thank the administrative teams at the high school, middle school, adult ed, and SST for listening carefully to our questions and being open to our feedback. It was incredibly impressive, all of the work that you put into your budgets. We worked for over five approximately two-hour sessions and carefully examined line by line the proposed budget you see this evening. It was not a rubber stamp process. As the teams would attest, in some instances, we grilled them pretty intensely to understand the justification for expenditures. In some cases, we were concerned that possibly not enough was being budgeted for a given line item, but we were assured that the needs were met within the request. Rash assured this is not a budget with a built-in cushion, as Molly just spoke to. When the BAC took a vote on this proposed budget, it was unanimously approved. I encourage those of you in attendance this evening to continue to ask questions, but know that this is a sound budget, and the members of the BAC who represent all of you recommend this budget. Thank you. All right. And then after the BAC, we had a budget workshop with the school board. This budget will look very familiar, because nothing has changed since that meeting. This is actually the exact same packet that you received that night. And what we did is we put together a video, so everyone might want to turn around here, to describe the changes in the budget.
Hi, welcome to this year's budget season. As you know, the Exeter Region Cooperative School District is combined of all six towns and covers the schools of the Cooperative Middle School, Exeter High School, Seco School of Technology, and our adult ed program. In this video, you'll see the major drivers and changes in our upcoming budget for this season, and hopefully, we can answer questions that you may have around increases and decreases as we work through this process. We always try to create a budget that is fiscally responsible and meets the needs of all of our students.
My name is Kim Shute, and between my husband and me, we have five children who've gone through the SAU-16 school system. We have required special education services for two of our kiddos, and cannot say enough about the assistance that's provided from OT, speech, executive functioning skills, and the services for emotional needs. They have been wonderfully supportive, particularly in the co-op and in the high school. My oldest child that's required services is a junior this year and has expectations of going to a four-year school. Not sure that would have been possible without these services. So we highly recommend that the budget supports this for other kiddos that have these types of requirements.
Another amazing opportunity CMS provides is student council. It gives a good leadership opportunity to students, and we coordinate spirit weeks that brings our school community together.
Hello, my name is Hannah Cass, and I'm part of the Student DJI Committee at Exeter High School. I'm just here to talk about the recent event we did at Riverwoods. So we got to go to Riverwoods, and we discussed dialogue and discussion and debate, and how to have really engage in dialogue with people, especially in a time like now. I think our group really enjoyed having that multi-generational conversation, and I think the group there as well had a really great time just talking with us and sharing experiences and what we think needs to be done in the world.
One opportunity that CMS offers is being able to audition for a musical and a play. Not a lot of other middle schools do this, so it's an amazing opportunity for students.
Hello, my name is Marley Beltry. I'm a senior at Exeter High School and in Year Two of Animal and Plant Sciences at the Seco School of Technology. SST has benefited me by challenging me with new opportunities, creating a strong community, and making me excited to learn every day.
The Exeter Region Cooperative School District budget contains three sections: Fed Funds, which are the adult education grants; Food Service, which is our meal service program; and the Operating Budget, which covers the expenses of the four schools Dr. Asbell previously noted. The Fed Funds and Food Service are self-sustaining programs. The part of the budget that impacts taxes is the Operating Budget. Most of the cooperative budget is contractual or mandatory obligations, including salary and the associated FICA, New Hampshire Retirement, professional development, and health benefits as outlined in the collective bargaining agreements; required special education services; student transportation; the SAU Assessment, which includes payroll for all staff, accounts payable for all expenses of the schools, human resources for all staff, and the superintendent of schools; facilities and maintenance costs to support the operations of the schools; the middle school bond; Great Bay Charter school support; and everything else is 5% of the budget. My colleagues will walk through the major changes from the prior fiscal year.
In the Exeter Region Cooperative School District, we have three employee associations: the Exeter Education Association, which serves certified staff such as teachers, school counselors, and others requiring licensure; the Exeter Region Cooperative Paraprofessional Association, which serves paraprofessionals; and the Exeter Area Administrators Association. All paraprofessionals and administrators' salaries are being increased per their collective bargaining agreement. This was a negotiating year for the Exeter Education Association, so that increase will be reflected in a separate warrant article. All non-affiliated staff were placed into the budget at a 3% increase. We also took a look at staffing levels and made adjustments as necessary based on enrollment and where contracted services are used. Annually, we receive the health and dental increases from our insurance providers. This year, the increase in health insurance rates varied per plan, and the plans offered changed due to the elimination of the point-of-service or POS plans from Health Trust. The district's HMO plan includes a 5.2% increase. The new PPO plan is more cost-effective than the current POS plan that is being eliminated. The district's dental plan includes a 5% increase. Regarding FICA and NHRS retirement, both are a function of salary. Therefore, when our salary budget goes up or down, so does FICA and retirement. Additionally, the required NHRS employer contribution rates have decreased. For those that fall under the teacher category, rates are going from 19.64% to 19.23%. For other employees, the rates went down from 13.53% to 12.75%.
The needs of students in SAU-16 have evolved significantly. Since 2016, the percentage of students with IEPs in the middle and high schools has increased from 12% to over 20%, and this trend is projected to continue into the 2025-2026 school year. The CDC reports that 40% of adolescents experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness in 2023, and 20% seriously considered suicide. Additionally, one in six children aged 2 to 8 have a behavioral, mental, or developmental disorder. As the complexity of student needs grows, there has been a corresponding rise in the demand for contracted services, out-of-district placements, and specialized transportation, further straining school budgets. To comply with IEP requirements, the school district has had to contract several services, including paraprofessional support due to staffing shortages. These services may include a variety of supports necessary for students to make meaningful progress. In response to the shortage of paraprofessionals and to provide comprehensive support across all tiers, the district has reallocated resources to hire additional interventionists at the middle and high school levels. This adjustment has helped lower the cost of contracted services for the 2025-2026 school year. The district is responsible for ensuring that students receive the special education services outlined in their IEPs even when they attend charter schools. Charter schools typically contract their own specialists, and the district often collaborates with these schools to use their resources, minimizing the need for costly transportation to district schools. While the district strives to provide the necessary supports within its schools, some students continue to struggle despite extensive interventions. Out-of-district placements are considered only after significant time, resources, and interventions have been exhausted. The number of out-of-district placements has risen due to the increasing complexity of student needs. Additionally, inflation has driven up the cost of tuition for these placements. Under IDEA, school districts must ensure that students with disabilities have access to a free and appropriate public education, which sometimes necessitates placing students in specialized out-of-district programs when they cannot make meaningful progress in the general education environment.
We are seeing rising costs for supplies and equipment due to inflation. Electric and natural gas rates are locked in until November 2026, and projections are based on prior-year actuals. Part of the salary decrease in the lines above is resulting in a higher contracted service for custodial staff. We continue to try to hire custodial staff when possible.
The increase in professional development is based on contractual obligations to enhance the learning of our staff. A renegotiation of the first student contract and a change in homeless student need has increased transportation. The co-op board has a memorandum of agreement with Great Bay Charter School to support students, and we are seeing a change in the number of students that attend. We have a fixed bond schedule for the middle school, and each year, the payment is a little bit less. All other changes are $34,451, or 1.26% of the budget change. When the voters go to the ballot boxes, they will have a choice between the proposed budget we have just presented and the default budget. The default is the prior-year budget plus or minus any contractual or mandatory obligations required by law, or one-time expenditures in the prior-year budget. Hi, everyone. My name is Carly Scherf, and I am your student representative on the cooperative board. Today, I will focus on how the SAU-16 has impacted me. At Exeter High School, the blend of academic and social programming has played a huge role in shaping who I am today. In the classroom, I've been challenged with difficult coursework and supportive teachers who pushed me to reach my goals. Whether I'm in an AP class or a unique elective, the opportunities here have allowed me to explore my interests while preparing for the next steps in life. Beyond the academics, the social aspect is just as important. Being involved in sports, clubs, and leadership roles has taught me to take responsibility and build strong connections with my peers. Programs like Student Senate helped me strengthen my skills in communication and understanding new perspectives while working with my friends. Together, these experiences have given me the tools and confidence I need to be successful. Inside and outside the classroom, on the court or on the field, I'll always be grateful for the community that has supported me since kindergarten.
So that concludes our video presentation on the budget. So I'll place the microphone in the center for questions.
Thank you, Molly.
Should we get more seats out? Do you want to put some?
I think, I think we're fine. No? I think we're fine. We're fine.
Hi, did you miss me? I don't think this is on, but I'm pretty loud.
It's on, it's on.
So Liz Freya?
Guess where I'm from? Brentwood, who we are trying to get out of the co-op. I think we have a pretty good case for taxation without representation. There are nine Exeter Region co-op members. There's only six here tonight at one of the most important meetings of the year. So Brentwood is nobody, no representation. I don't know who that other girl is next to you. Is she from Exeter?
She's online.
She's here. She's here. It's Tammy. She's here, yes.
Tammy's right here. She can hear everything.
Oh, okay.
She's on Zoom. We reviewed that.
Okay.
I wasn't here at the beginning, so some of us have to work.
I do too. I do too, Liz.
Really?
I do, Liz. I have to work also.
Who's that there? Who's, I can't see.
It's Erin.
She's coming. She's at the hallway.
She's at her, with her son.
I don't need her name. I need her town.
Stratum.
Stratum.
So Stratum is no representation. Brentwood is no representation.
No, Stratum is right here.
Oh, she does. Okay. Brentwood, my town, no representation. I'm just saying. I wanted to ask the student rep, is that you? What social programming have you had since March 13th, 2020?
There's no question. This is just a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Public comment.
Public comments. How many, so I can't ask, how many students do we have in Exeter High School now, today? How many high, how many middle school students do we have today? Can I ask that?
Yep.
Yes, you can ask that.
Our, our number on October 1 at Exeter High School was 1,372.
I wasn't asking on October 1. I can look that up. I was asking on January 15, 16.
That's the number I have right in front of me right now.
Okay. Do we have the middle school?
We have approximately 950 kids.
950 kids and 13, what was the?
1,372.
1,372. And is that up from last year?
Yes, it is. Again, 16 students.
Okay. And I haven't had a chance to go through the budget, because we don't have a town administrator, police chief, or treasurer in Brentwood. So I want to know where the, is it 71 million? Because I didn't hear all of the beginning. So the 71 million, that's an increase, right? 4%, 3.99?
Correct.
Is that, did you break it down by school, the increase?
No, we're cooperative. That's how we've always done it, Liz, is we don't break it down by town. But I believe Molly has information of tax rate impact by town.
Yeah.
Can we?
Oh, do you have a?
This was just, this was comment, yeah.
Get herself caught up, maybe.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Liz, like, since you, you're rushing in here late, but you have a lot of questions, maybe you could sit for a minute and go through the budget and then come back and ask your questions? This is the public hearing. You're right.
Yes.
You're right.
Would somebody else like to speak? Don't sit down. How many minutes we get? Three? No. A public hearing is not public input. It's different.
Ted Lloyd, where are you from?
Ted Lloyd from East Kingston.
I'm Liz Freya from Brentwood. Do you have any kind of question?
No, I don't, I do have one question. In addition to the numbers that you put forward in Molly's presentation, there's also a warrant article for the new collective bargaining agreement, which adds nearly a million dollars to the budget. That would raise the percentage increase from year to year if that is accepted. If it's not accepted, is the budget without the CBA in it? Is that sufficient to pay our teachers? And how does that work?
Right. So if the collective bargaining agreement does not pass, then it
So if the collective bargaining agreement does not pass, then essentially all of the folks in that CBA, which would be our certified teachers, remain where they're at.
Oh, okay. So, and that's in the?
That's in the current budget. Yes.
Thank you. Liz, do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you, Ted. So the, what he just asked, this year it's a warrant article, but if it passes, which it probably will, next year it's a, it's in the budget for next year, right? The following year, '26, '27. But it's a warrant article this year. Okay. A lot of people in my town are new, and they're over 55, and they don't know that there's this meeting tonight. How do we get information out to new people that don't live in Exeter? How would that communicate? Don't we have a communications person now?
We do not have a communications person. That would be me.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So.
So 71 million is a 4% increase, and I think when I last did this, it was last year or the year before, we had lost 800 kids from the middle and high school. And the budget went up super dramatically. I have all the numbers at home. I didn't have time to pull them together today. I would like to know how you justify the salaries at the SAU office, which I know is not in the co-op budget, which has sneaked in at the end of September, beginning of October, and this co-op budget, when we don't, do we have test results? I don't have a child in the school anymore. My youngest is a doctor, a physical therapist at Beth Israel. So how do we justify this expenditure? You know, we don't mind in Brentwood, paying for a good product. Unfortunately, the children in this sense are the product. So I don't know about you, but how do you justify, for the older people, I think, what is Social Security, 2.5% COLA? So how do you justify these numbers? Where are you getting them from?
I think, Liz, it would be behoove you to go through and watch the video of the numerous hearings.
I don't want to. It doesn't matter what the budget committee does. It doesn't matter what anybody else does. What matters is today, which is a public hearing, and February 5. And if people don't know about February 5 because they're here, people don't understand. Somebody asked me today about Kansas. Somebody says, I had a family thing. Can you tell me what goes on? I said, no. Come to the meeting. Watch the meeting. But if you don't come to the meeting, you don't ask questions, you don't make appointments, you don't, my brother just died, my mother's 94 and losing her mind, and my husband just had a total knee replacement. And last year it was, at Christmas both times, it was a total back fusion. So I don't have time to watch people I don't trust do months and months of meetings that, like, justify it. Somebody needs to justify these numbers. Molly, maybe. Molly, go ahead. You can.
So Liz, it sounds like you want us to justify the numbers. We've been doing that over the last couple of months.
How do you reach out to the people of the smaller town?
This is public comment. So we, we've heard your comment. We appreciate it. Thank you. And you're welcome to write to us and ask us more questions, but we invite you also to look back at our past meetings.
I've been doing this for 15 years. Sorry, I'm leaving.
I can speak to the different ways we've reached out, and we've tried to increase communication around budget, as well as numerous other things. So.
Don't have the microphone, Liz.
So thank you for stepping up. What's your name?
My name is Steve Snyderman.
Hi, Steve.
I'm in Kensington. And I just have a quick question for you, as I've been able to do a quick scan of the budget. I see that we have a significant increase in the special ed budget for this year. Can you tell me, are we, we have increased number of students that are requiring the services, or the services is getting more expensive? Can you give me ideas of what's going on with that?
Let me answer that.
Or don't we have state funding that is supposed to help with that?
I can, I can answer the, I can answer the state funding question, and then we have both of our directors here to speak to that increase, because it is our largest area that's impacted. So it's a great question. In the past, if you went over three and a half times the normal, quote-unquote, "normal" cost of a special education student, then we would get reversed, reimbursed 100% of that difference from the state. Then it went down to 87%. The commissioner sent a letter, I want to say November, so I have that timing right, that now we're only going to get reimbursed 67%. We have been very verbal with our commissioner and asked him to go to the state for emergency funding to fund at least that 87% that we were all anticipating as we went into the budget process earlier, this summer and in October. I just read an article yesterday. It was an article, so I can't verify it, because I just read an article that he is planning now, after all the work that we have done as a state recognizing the needs, how this is impacting budgets across the state of New Hampshire, that he has a plan to go to the governor and ask for funds. Because right now, and people help me out, there's a surplus in the educational trust of 25, 125 million surplus in the educational trust at the state level. So we're asking for funds as a state to at least meet that 87% that we were anticipating instead of cutting it to 67% reimbursement for catastrophic aid. So when it's three and a half times more a normal cost to educate a student that has an IEP or an individual education plan. In addition to that, there are numerous other reasons, and I would ask Sonya and/or Lisa to speak to those differences and why the increase is in our budget.
And also, just before Sonya and Lisa speaks, CAT aid is a revenue source. So when we look at the budget, it's the expense side of the house, and you have to appropriate all expenditures, and the revenue comes in as an offset to your tax rate. So it's not a relief of expense, it's a revenue to offset the expense. So you still have to appropriate the funds in your budget.
I see. Okay. So then, my first question is, do we have more students now?
So that's where Lisa and Sonya are going to come in.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sonya Roche, the director at the middle school, and this is Lisa Moore, and the director at the high school. We are increasing in our student needs, whereas some of the enrollment has declined as a school. When I started my job in 2016, 11% of students were on an IEP. We're, next year, we're projected to be at 24%. And that changes every, yes, so it changes every day. It's up, I think, 2% or 3% from last year. So the needs are definitely increasing dramatically.
Our increase at the high school might be a little bit smaller. I would say when I started this role in 2020, great time to start going into administration, by the way. We were at 13%, and we're roughly around 17 right now at this time of year. But we have a whole other half of the year for potential referrals and needs.
I also want to add, as a school district, we've been working really hard to develop a multi-tiered system of support, so that we're really kind of beginning to offset some of those students that are qualifying for special ed. So we're giving students help sooner, but that takes resources and interventionists to provide that, so.
So the hope is by giving them sooner that we can get them back into the general curriculum that they would require the?
You got it. Yeah, 100%. So.
And also providing opportunities for teachers to work together with special educators and that co-teaching model, so that you can, you're able to help the students within the classroom, because all the students end up benefiting.
And how long have you been trying to do this early intervention, and how effective has that been with kids transitioning from middle to high school?
We've been working on it a number of years. I would say the last three years particularly has been a big, huge focus for that. And we, if you look online for some of our presentations for budget, you can see how that's expanded every year, so.
That is the question, the question. How successful has the early intervention been? Are you, are you have a number of kids requiring IEPs in high school going down as a result of the early intervention?
I think right now we're stabilizing. For a number of years, we were increasing dramatically, and right now we're kind of staying status quo, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you guys also speak to the increase in special education costs with the age increase? Because that was another new legislation this year that's increased costs.
Oh, yes, of course. So there was a change in legislation about needing to provide opportunities in education for our students up until age 22. So some of our students with significant needs, and also all students who are identified as having special education or needing special education have an opportunity to be educated until age 22, or as a team when you decide to exit them from special education. So that one year has made a significant increase, especially since the most of the students that stay from 21 to 22 do have the most medically, they're, are most medically fragile, and they're the most amount of significant needs, which is a great amount of resources.
Ridge Benton, Brentwood. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody here for all the work they put in. I, I know that sometimes it gets a little combative, but I think most of the people appreciate your work and putting in the time. My question is, and it sort of takes off from Liz's question, when will you publish data on the children's progress academically? When is that going to come out so that we can see exactly, you know, what we are getting for this money? And the second thing is, how do you, I can see how with pretty students in a normal curriculum, that you can take standardized tests, but how do you record your progress statistically for the special ed people? Because are they taking special tests, or can we quantify how many kids drop their IEPs after a couple of years? Just so that we have something, rather than counting on sort of warm and fuzzy feelings, if there are numbers that back, back up those sort of statements? Thank you. Thank you. Can we address that?
Yes, so we do progress, the building administrators do a progress update every, usually October or November, and they go over all the state data and the iReady progress data, which documents progress of all of our students. All students, including students with IEPs, have to take the state test. A few take an alternative test, which is also part of the state testing. I think it's important to note that some of our students that are out-of-district costs, if it's an out-of-district residential cost, that's now running for one student, right around $300,000 per student. And that includes, i.e., transportation if that's needed, or if it's residential, which is overnight, obviously includes room and board, and that's part of some of the larger expenses. Internally, if a student with an IEP is receiving services in that MTSS or multi-tiered system of support system, those are often processes where we will see kids get different interventions and make progress. That's measured a variety of ways. Every student with an IEP has a quarterly progress meeting and a progress report, and that involves the parent and an IEP team with teachers and administration from the school they attend, and they chart progress. If a student does not make enough adequate progress, that's when we have to look at programming and change their programming. That means that they can't, they're not accessing their education appropriately. So in special education, because it's a federally funded program, and the law states that we, every child is allowed and should have a free and appropriate education, that if a child isn't making progress with an IEP, then we have to adopt the programming. And sometimes that can lead to, as you heard in the video, numerous meetings and upping services to a point where they may go out of district. So we always try to have students make progress within their community and within their school system first. It is very well monitored, students with IEPs, because that's part of what the federal regulations say that we have to do. And so that's clearly the measured progress. We do have to have metrics, and it depends on the students and what metrics are being used, because some students, it might be more of a behavioral measure, because that's what's not allowing them to access their education. Some students, it's a cognitive, right? It might be a math deficit. So those things are measured differently depending on what the IEP or the plan for that student is written for. That's why it's an individual plan. In regards to the majority of our students that take our iReady diagnostic, which is in English and math, and our state test, which is called the SAS, those are presented on, at least we do it at the end of the year, always usually around May, each principal and their team present, and then we always do it October, November, on the previous year's data, because we don't always get that from the state till June or July sometimes. So we present the beginning of the year. And I would ask Drew Bairstow, who's the principal at CMS, and Principal Monahan, to just highlight that data. I do have, just briefly, that, for example, I can give you an example, in math on the state assessment, in 2021, 39% of our students had met the benchmark or were proficient in math. Last year, we continued to increase each year, and last year we're up to 57% against 39% at the state. So the state average of 39% are proficient. We have moved from that 39% up to 57% over two years, which is, which is a good gain. And part of that is because of that multi-tiered system of support and getting to students before they need an IEP. So again, trying to reduce that IEP number by providing kids with what they need. But certainly, if you want more information than that or a general overview, I can send these to you, or you can go on the October, if you go on the SAU webpage, and you go to the SAU and you look up the co-op, all of the board meetings there under the board, you can see all the slideshows. Everything that's presented at a board meeting is online under the cooperative district boards. And if you have difficulty, contact my office, and Sharon Gulliver and myself will direct you how to find that.
Thank you. All right, changing to the next subject. All right, the next line is professional development.
Just get your name and your, in your town again. I know, again, because we have someone recording this.
Steve Snyderman from Kensington.
Thank you, Keith.
And my question is, is that there's a significant increase in professional development. I am a firm believer in professional development. Maybe think wrong of me. I just want a clarification of it as to why we have such a significant increase in that budget area.
Sure.
Sure, yeah.
So in the past, our Title II grants, our Title II-A grants, we get from the state of New Hampshire, and they get it from the federal, from the feds, right? They get a pocket of money, and then they divide it out to districts depending on frame-reduced numbers, et cetera, et cetera. So our portion keeps decreasing as every, our title grant funds are decreasing. So our Title II-A grant, which is, can only be used for professional development, has decreased over the past five years. In our cooperative, in our CBA, our teachers' agreement, they have the benefit of having some professional development. So as well as like courses, right? College courses to increase their learning, going to workshops, et cetera. We have less funding in the grant system, so now we have to increase the line on this side of our operating budget in order to meet the requirements of someone that they have a right to in their cooperative, in their bargaining unit agreement to cover those costs. We had to up that a bit. I can tell you that there is a big push to unify our professional learning. For example, some of the funds have been going towards professional learning communities and training people on those, because that's how teachers learn how to look at data and plan interventions, which in turn give us results like from a 39% to a 57%, right? So it's really about informing instruction and how to use data. That's a general, huge push in our system as an SAU and certainly at the co-op. So getting many teachers that training, and then there's internal training. We try to do that internally, which does save us some money. We have many teachers that are well-educated in a variety of areas, because they've gone to something. So for example, our March Professional Development Day, it's all of our tiers teaching, all of our teachers teaching teachers. So we do try when we get, when we send someone to something and they get a skill, we then almost try to train the trainer that way to keep costs effective. Another big push is that MTSS system. It's a complicated process, and it's a large change. So we, again, send some folks to some training that they can bring back and train in their building. So we do try to use the train-the-trainer model as efficiently as we can to keep costs down. But it's really an impact of the reduced title grant funding in professional development gets translated over in order to meet the demands of the CBA.
Yeah, and in addition, we're having a lot more people utilize training now that COVID is, we're past COVID, because a lot of people didn't utilize it when you couldn't be in person or travel a lot of places.
So the previous budget number was a COVID number? Is that what you're saying?
No, not just a COVID number. It was lesser, but the big part of it is the decrease in the grants, but it's also people now being able to travel, being able to be in person, and utilizing the, what the benefits of their collective bargaining agreement.
So if a teacher is working on their, say, their master's degree, is that part of this budget, or is that someplace else in the budget?
Molly, can you clarify for me, because I can't, just can't remember?
For reimbursing them for their?
So I grouped all the professional development lines together.
So that would include college courses then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Ted Lloyd from East Kingston, one more time. Thank you. I do have a couple of comments that maybe you could respond to. First is the three parts to your budget. I don't recall ever seeing, and it could be just because I'm old, but I don't recall seeing that Fed funds listed before. If someone could explain that, that would be very helpful. If someone could explain that, that would be very helpful. And I really would like to just make a plea to the board that the state financial, education financial statistics just came out this month, and I just saw them announced this morning. And I took a look at that for Exeter. And that was reporting on fiscal year '24, which is the year out before this one, the current one, and two years before the budget that we're talking about being proposed. But in fiscal year '24, the high school expenses in terms of dollars per pupil went up 9%. And the middle school, oh, excuse me, that was the middle school. The high school went up 12.6%. That, I know last year's budget for the current year was a significant increase. And now we're looking at another $3.7 million being added to the budget for the coming year. My plea is that people can't afford this. And we're coming up in a situation where a lot of the people that are paying taxes don't have any kids. The school enrollments over the years are going down. Everyone admits that that's the future for us. We do not seem to be able to educate our kids. All due respect to you, Esther. The 53% that are proficient in math means that 47% are not proficient in math. And I know you're aware of that, and I know we're trying to do it. But we need to come up with ways to more efficiently and more effectively educate our kids. And until we do that, we're going to be faced with declining enrollments and a decreasing population in the six towns that the SAU comprises. And that is something none of us want to happen, because that is economic failure. Please, look for ways to do better with less money. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Yeah, a couple of comments that you made, we'd like to speak to, but thank you for your comments.
Do you want to?
Yeah. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. My name is Dan Provost, I teach at Exeter High School, I live in Exeter. I'm here tonight because I had to give my daughter Collette a ride. Thrilled to be here. So just a comment, but before I make it, I mean, I teach at Adult Ed with Michelle. I worked with Pam when she was the assistant principal at Exeter High School. She oversaw the English department. I was incredibly sad when she went to SST, but it was a huge boon for them. I knew Drew when he was the principal at Lincoln Street School. And I was excited when he followed Collette up to CMS. I was psyched when he took that job. Obviously, worked with Mike a long time here. I was excited when he took over for Jim Tremblay. I've known Dr. Azbell since I was hired here. I live across the street from Kim. I used to live across the street from Dawn. I know Melissa, her son, since they were three.
I coached.
Yeah. Taught your son, taught your daughter, you know, like, and here's my comment. I trust the people in this room implicitly. I don't always agree with them, but I'm always listened to. When I go to Mike's office, when I email Drew, when I go to Michelle for something at Adult Ed. The people in this room are doing human's work in a time when I don't understand why milk costs what it costs or bread costs what it costs. And I have no public voice in any of those conversations. I'm appreciative that I have a public voice in this conversation. And I trust these people to do the job that they've been elected to do or appointed to do. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to say that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, for your comments and for your work every day.
Absolutely.
Liz Furia, I'll be respectful. Are you an English teacher at Exeter High School anymore?
I am.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure. He's a great teacher. My son had him, the baby, who's a doctor in Boston. I'm trying to be positive. So I, well, I'll let you answer. You can answer Ted's question.
Okay, thanks.
Ted, I think this board, I can speak on behalf of this board and myself in that we are in full agreement that this cost of education is rising and that we see that this is not sustainable for the taxpayers. However, what we do understand is that real change can be made in Concord at the legislative level. For example, let me give you two examples. Last year, House Bill 1656 was to, we get an additional $2,100 for every student for our adequacy aid for special ed, right? If they're on an IEP, you get an additional amount. That bill was changing that to $27,000 per student with an IEP. That bill went to interim study. Not for lack of, on the school side, many, many, many of us went to legislative hearings, to all of the process, and fought for that. Our legislators, I live in Maine. They probably don't care a thing that I say, because I'm not a voting constituent, right? However, if we start to unite and start to go to the legislative and say, "You are not providing an appropriate funding for public education." They're not. We won the lawsuit, of course, it's being appealed, so, right? It's in limbo right now. However, it's clear that we're not. So another bill, to that point, House Bill 1583, was a bill that was going to increase the annual cost of providing an opportunity for an education from the $4,404, $4,404 is what the state thinks that we, every district in the state can give an adequate education on. There isn't a district in the state that can do that. There isn't a district in the state, even the state can't do that, right? So they wanted to raise that to $10,000 per pupil. That also went to interim study. So I urge you all, we hear you. We have so many fixed costs. 95% of our budget is fixed costs, as Molly pointed out, right? So even if I cut the 5% that I can, that amount was $43,000. It wasn't enough to make an impact truly, right, on your concerns. So we're imploring you, please get involved. Please follow the legislative, right, do that. Because that is where you can make a difference, is at the state level at Concord. Because many of our legislators, not all, but many of them, don't understand the intricacies of a public school budget, of how we function, right? They have one particular anecdotal story from their particular town, and then they create a bill, which isn't helpful to many of us, right? And so we're doing some education of our joint board in two weeks, whenever that is, the 27th, I think, of like a one-pager. So all of our joint board knows, how do you track, how do you track these bills? What's the process? How do you get involved? How do you write? How do you contact? Who are your local legislative? I'm looking back here, she's in the room. Deb was here with us tonight. So, you know, here's a person that understands and takes the time as a legislator, but we have one. There's what, 400 and, how many, Deb, help me out? 424 people. We have one, right? And so that is how we're going to impact the tax rate and what you pay, truly. That's how we have to do it. Because our budgets, we can manipulate some, and we did this year. We cut it tight. The budget advisory was, that statement was very accurate. It's not going to be enough for your concerns. It really isn't. So I think that that's important, and I'm glad you raised that point. And I think, I urge all of you to be involved and at least pay attention to what's going on and have a voice there. And Deb, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Liz Furia, South Road, I remembered my point. My point was, I was a member of this board. I was a member of the joint board for 13 years. I served in Brentwood twice, four years. Then I served on the Co-op for three years, and then I served for, again. So I'm intimately involved. How many times have you run for? He's run for the board a couple of times, Fred Lloyd from East Kingston. Maybe you guys didn't know that.
I've served with Ted. All right, thank you.
But what I'm saying is, some of us are trying to get involved. If you're in a little town, you have no clout. You have no clout. There's nine members, Brentwood has one, he's not here. Newfields has one. We're three times the size of Newfields. We have one, you have one. We're twice the size of East Kingston and Kensington. They have one, we have one. Like, we're not half the size of Stratum, they have two. We're half the size of Exeter, but they have three. There's 28,000-plus voters could be here tonight. And I dare say it's split between admin, teachers, and, like, I don't, you say you have communications getting out. I don't know how, we're not getting it. Thank you.
All right, next.
Hello again, Steve Snyderman from Kensington. I feel like a broken record up here. Please forgive me. I am a recent transplant from Michigan. So I am learning the ins and outs of both the education and the legislative process here in New Hampshire. And I got to tell you, it's quite different from what I'm used to. And so forgive me if I'm trying to understand things. We have a elementary school that is covered under a separate budget within our town. And then, once they come, graduate from elementary school, they come into this program, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So the budgets that we have for both those two programs are funded by the people in the town. And a percentage of that is supposed to come from state funding. Now, over the past five years or so, what has the percentage been shifting between the state funding for education? And how much more is being asked to be picked up by the individual people in the towns? That's my first question. And the second question, I've become aware of the voucher program in this state. And how is that money being siphoned off at the state level for voucher systems impacting our local budget? Can you help enlighten me on those two questions?
I appreciate the questions. I am going to pause, because we're really here to talk about our budget. And I'll give you an opportunity to answer, but I just want to make sure that we're talking about our budget. Those are good questions, and that's where I think we do need to get involved and learn. So I appreciate them.
I would love to meet with you one-on-one, because it's a very complicated answer in regards to the voucher system. And we are going to talk about it at the joint board meeting on the 27th of this month.
Right, you said for this month.
It's not a public hearing, but there's opportunity for public input. And there's be a lot of education for all of our board members, as well as anyone that attends, around that voucher system and how that works. So I would urge you to come to that. If you don't want to wait that long, I would urge you to contact me. I'm everywhere on the webpage, Esther Azbell, so we could make a one-on-one appointment, because I think that they're great questions. But I also know that this is a budget hearing, and those questions that you're particularly asking don't impact this particular Co-op budget. But I will, I would love to explain that to you, coming from Michigan, so you have a good understanding of that. It would just, we'd need about an hour to go over that stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bye.
Thanks.
Took you years, right?
And if Dr. Azbell's not available, I also live in Kensington, and I'm happy to meet anytime. I grew up around the corner from Dan.
Every so often, I hear your voice.
Who's talking? Great. All right, well, then, back to the budget then. If I, forgive me, just another question. On your Adult Ed budget line, can you tell me as to, we seem to have a significant increase in that area too. Is that because we've got more students coming in that don't have high school diplomas?
That is a shift, because a position that was formerly grant-funded, in the trend of decreasing grants, is now coming into the operating budget. And Michelle is the director of Adult Ed.
Maybe we could talk about the student letter writing campaign that our students wrote to you and made an exact change up in Concord, thanks to you. So thank you for that. Yeah, so Adult Ed, we have a person that's worked in Adult Ed for close to 20 years that is an Exeter resident. And unfortunately, due to decreasing grants, that we're having a hard time really keeping that position funded. And as you've heard tonight, the increase of some of the work they're doing with MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, we have had an increase of high school students that actually come to our center, that actually take classes with Dan Provost, because they unfortunately didn't do so well at the high school. And so they're allowed another opportunity to finish those classes at our program, which in essence, really, we, school year '24, we had 51 students total, total, that were in our program, taking classes, that were active high school students, mostly at Exeter High School. I don't have the breakdown, but we do have some that come from Raymond and from Sanborn, but mostly from Exeter, that retake classes with us. So it is a great gain. It allows students to remain on track and to graduate and to actually be a productive member of society and pay for our social security when we get there, right? But yeah, so that's a position that is, we're looking to actually fold into the budget so we can keep her employed, so we can continue to do great things for students.
Okay, thank you. All right, and thank you very much for tolerating my questions. I really appreciate the efforts that you folks are putting into it and look forward to spending more time getting to understand what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to New Hampshire.
Bill, could I introduce myself?
Yeah.
Thank you. May I have one second? Thank you, Deborah. Good evening, everybody. I'm Erin Garcia de Prades. I'm a Stratum rep on the Co-op board. I want to apologize for being late. I think in my five years on two different boards, I think that was the first time I've ever been late for a meeting. I have a kiddo playing in the JV basketball team, and he was in the middle of a great game, and I just couldn't walk away. So sometimes the kids come first.
Good for you.
Thanks, Erin, thanks.
Was it a good turnout? Good?
It wasn't till the end.
Thank you for saying that. The kids always come first, which is why we're here today. And I appreciate the work that everyone has done on this budget. Is that better?
Just say your name.
My name is Deborah Alchler, I'm from Stratum.
Thank you, Deborah, I do know you, but thank you.
Yeah. Bill. I am Senator from District 24, which represents two of the towns in the Cooperative School District, and I represent two other Cooperative School Districts. I'm very glad to hear that there's, we're going to address the voucher impact, which is about to hit us really hard. And I just, I want to offer my support and just say for the record that there is less money coming from the state. And it's not right, and it's not okay. And the fooling around with special education is tragic. And I wish, I am in support and will join you. I think it probably would be helpful for us, for me to join with you in speaking with the governor about getting emergency aid, because we need the emergency aid. That said, I'm curious about the transportation costs. And are our transportation costs increasing because of fuel costs or staff? I know, I see the ads that they're constantly looking for more people. Or is it a combination of both? Or where's the pressure point there?
So we had a contract with First Student. It was a three, what they call a three-plus-two contract. Three years locked in, plus two additional years at a mutually agreed-upon increase. However, they are in a negotiation year. And so we are in the middle of negotiating with them the new contract. So that's part of it. The other part of it is the increase in special ed transportation.
Thank you, everyone. Any other?
Could I say one thing? When we hear the words, "The state is going to be sending us less," we should be saying, "That will be paid for by your property taxes." That's the issue. Your property taxes are going up, because the state is not supporting education as it should be. Bottom line.
Thank you, Bob.
Ted Lloyd again, from East Kingston. Just was wondering if somebody could address that $400,000 for Fed funds?
So the $400,000 is in there, and it's put in as an expense, but it's also put in as a revenue. So $0 are actually raised in taxation, because what happens, my friend Michelle here spends the money, and then we get the grant money to offset it. So at the beginning of the presentation, you heard me talk about how the real driver is the operating budget, not the food service and the Fed funds. And the reason why is the revenue from the grant offsets the expense. But in order to expend it, you have to appropriate it.
Correct, I understand that. So that's money being spent that comes from the federal government?
So it's, they're grant monies, but we have to appropriate the funds to be able to expend them. So it doesn't have an impact on taxation? Does that answer your question?
I think.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Can I say something, Bill?
Yes, Amy.
So when I used to...
So when I used to be Molly here, six years ago, I used to be the BA. It was always on the budget. It's a pass-through. And they only spend what is received. So what money they receive from food service sales, whether it's from free and reduced lunch, or money that comes from the state for breakfast and for lunch, that's what's raised, and that's what they spend to offset the food costs. Same thing with grants. If she doesn't receive the grant, then she won't be spending the money. So it's just a pass-through. If you saw the revenue side, you'd see $400,000 of revenue, $400,000 of expense. It's a wash. So it has no impact on your taxes.
Well, this has been, I appreciate this hearing. Because it's supposed to be a hearing on the budget, but we were able to answer questions, ask questions, get a lot out in the room. We appreciate everyone's, we'll give one more turn, and then, yeah.
Gisela Lloyd from East Kingston. How do we find out more about these categories, like student services, student support? What do they mean?
So right in back of that summary is the line-by-line budget. So what I did is I grouped them into different categories, and I could send you all the line items that group things together. But it's broken out by every single line, if you keep flipping through the packet. The categories, yeah, the categories just grouped it so I can put it on one page.
If you come to the website, it's easy to go through and get more clarity.
And one of the things, too, is that one of the goals of the board here is always to be transparent. So we do have all of this on the website, the SAU website. It's all there. All of our meetings are there. We really wanna encourage you to go look at that. And I use it also. It's changed quite a bit over the last year. So it's really organized, and Sharon does a great job with it, so.
And we have all the budget advisory presentations up there, too. So if you wanna see the presentations that these people did, they're all posted there for you. And if you have any questions, you can always call me.
Great. Well, I wanna thank you for your time tonight, showing up. That is the most important thing. And we're gonna conclude the public hearing for this evening. Thank you. We'll give a five-minute break before we start our meeting, our board meeting. And everybody's welcome to stay, if you'd like.
Showing up, we will begin our board meeting. Please join me in saying the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, it is 7:17. I will open up public input. So if someone has comments, they're welcome to walk up to the mic. I will leave it open. We were going to jump right in. We've introduced everyone, so I'm just going to jump right into the meeting. Carlyle, will you start?
Yes, of course. So I'm here for the student recap of what's going on at the high school. Recently, after break, we started right up with winter carnival. So with those of you who aren't familiar, winter carnival is the week before February vacation, where we just have a lot of fun, a lot of activities, pep rallies, and all the grades are competing against each other in one big eventful week. Our goal this year is really to just get as many people involved as possible. So whether you're athletic or your artistic ability, or if you even like trivia or something, we want everyone to contribute to their class as much as they can, whether that's in a big way or just a small way of showing up and being there to support your classmates. So a theme for this year is board games. So each of the commons out there is assigned to a grade. So yeah, so we have board games. So the seniors are going to be Candy Land, the juniors have Monopoly, the sophomores have Clue, and the freshmen have Battleship. So commons decorating will take place the week before. So it's the second week in February, so after school or during the school day, students will go up there and use materials to decorate their commons as their theme. So lots of colors, lots of fun. We try to be as clean as possible, and you do get points for cleaning up and using as less resources as you can. So just trying to be respectful of our space and also have fun and build all that momentum up into actual winter carnival, where then it gets judged by teachers on who did the best. So right now, we're in the planning stages. We're trying to plan out fun events that we can do during pep rallies and off periods earlier in the week. And recently, in recent years, we've done dodgeball, volleyball, and knockout during those events, or basketball against the teachers in those periods. So we're just trying to finalize our schedule for what that week is going to look like, as well as asking teachers to host maybe some fun trivia events or some knitting events in their classrooms to keep everyone occupied during those off periods. But we're really just trying to get everyone excited now and to get the ball rolling and have momentum going into it, so that we have as much participation as possible. So we're really looking forward to it. We have subcommittee meetings that we enjoy, and we talk about a lot of stuff. So we're really just looking forward to one, at least for me, one last winter carnival. So yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. All right, Colette, would you like to go? Lachlan?
Hi, I'm Lachlan McCauley, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Colette Provost, and I'm also in eighth grade.
We've had many concerts in the music department throughout December and the beginning of January. In December, there was the combined eighth grade and EHS concert, the eighth grade middle school chorus, and many chorus groups from the high school performed at EHS. On January 14th, we had the seventh and eighth grade band and orchestra concerts at EHS. It was a packed house and a very successful performance. Last night, we had the sixth grade band and orchestra informances. It was another very successful performance. Also, the jazz choir took a field trip to see Frozen the Musical at the Music Hall in Portsmouth. They sang carols as well and spread cheer and had lots of fun.
CMS is now offering a People of Color affinity group. This group is open to all students who identify as people of color and allies. It is run by the sixth grade vice principal, Mr. Perez, and meets during community time. This group is a great opportunity for students to share similar experiences.
Rehearsals for our spring play, Game of Tiaras, has started. Performers underwent a rigorous audition process, including individual auditions and group callbacks the following day. Out of 55, 26 were cast. The performances are on March 13th and 14th.
Before winter break, CMS Builders Club hosted a series of dress-up days. Some of the themes included Hawaiian Day, Whiteout, and onesie or PJ Day. It was a fun week, and it was a nice way to head into the break.
On January 9th, we had an awesome spelling bee with 22 participants throughout the school. There were 75 rounds, and they had to use three different lists. It lasted from period one to period five and emerged with a winner from eighth grade, Parthvi Bhaskar, who also won when she was in sixth grade.
Wow.
Wow.
Do we know the word?
Yeah. What was the winning word? Do you know?
You'll have to send it to us.
Marauders, I think. That's what she told me.
What? Say it again?
Marauders.
Marauders.
All right, well, we're not going to ask anyone to spell it, okay? We wouldn't want to win, you know? Well, thank you. It was so nice to see you all up on the video too, and live. That was great. How was it watching yourselves?
I did not know this was happening. I thought this happened last meeting when I wasn't here, but...
Yeah, I saw my face on there, and my stomach like dropped.
I did see you both had a look like, what is going on? So that was great. We appreciate you doing the videos and showing up here and giving us updates. So it's really... Did anybody have any comments? All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I know, we kept you a lot later.
I know.
But we're glad we did, because we had another speaker, so that was great. So thank you both for showing up. Thank you, Dan. You can go. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good sleeping.
Oh, that's right.
Day off tomorrow.
Yeah, you have a day off. You don't have to leave. Hold on. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. They were sent out last week. I did go through them. Anybody have any comments about the minutes? All right, I'd look for a motion to approve the December 17th public minutes.
Make a motion?
Thank you, Dawn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Erin. Any discussion? Good, all those in favor? Please raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Those abstaining? We've got one abstention. And, okay, that makes everyone, right? Yep. All right, the December 17th non-public minutes. Someone like to make a motion to approve those?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-public meetings on December 17th.
Thank you, Bob. Would someone second that?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Kim. All those in favor? Please raise your hands.
Aye.
All right, and then those abstaining? Okay. Thank you very much. You get all that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Short and sweet, we've just been working on budgets. Budgets, budgets, budgets. People had, obviously, over the winter break, and then they came back or stayed working, and then just kept trying to keep people healthy and houses healthy, so that we can be here for questions and et cetera. So really, that's been the focus of the SAU work for the past three weeks since we met last, was budget development.
Great, thank you for that. Now, there's a lot of work going on in that. So we'll do a finance report. Molly?
Got to turn that on. First, I have, I guess it's from the charitable foundation. We did it for Drew last month. So the high school now has one for $6,000. So we would just need a motion to accept that.
Oh, great.
And Mike, I don't know if you have any other further things to add for it?
Can you remind us what that's for?
So it's from the Arts in Action Project, and it's going to be for Exeter High School.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the $6,000 from the Arts in Action program.
Excellent, thank you, Bob. I'd be happy to second that motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is current year financial. So in your board pack, you did have the added expenses from last month. Did anyone have any questions on that? Okay, great. And so then the last thing is the budget, which we've already discussed in great detail tonight. And if the board wanted to make a motion to move it to deliberative, I do have the warrant, the MS-26, and the defaults, and your election warrant all here for signature if you wanted to make a motion to move it to the deliberative.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion? Amy?
I'll make a motion to move the FY-26 budget and warrant articles as presented to the deliberative session.
Great, if you would like to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kim. Any discussion before I ask for a vote?
Yes.
Yes, Kim?
I just want to thank the administrators, the Budget Advisory Committee, the board, and everyone who's weighed in on this budget. As we all know, it's a long, lengthy process that starts in the summertime and continues through most of the year up until now. And I appreciate that this budget's always based on needs and that we are very, super conscientious of the point that our property taxes offset a lot of this. We're all property taxpayers here, on the board as well. And do appreciate the discussion around where our State Department of Education hasn't stepped up to support our state, our local school budgets. And this is so important, and I do appreciate Esther you bringing that up and letting us know how important our voices are to be raised and conquered, where these decisions are going to be made and impact many of us at the local level. I feel very comfortable with this budget. I appreciate the increase in special education needs in our district. Every student deserves an education, and because of the hard work of this school district, many of those students are able to stay in district and actually reduce our costs. They could be a lot higher if we didn't have the multi-tiered system of support and the hard-working people in this district who are able to provide for our students. So that, to me, stood out as something that I'm grateful for with this budget. I also want to point out that there's such a small part that we actually have control over that's not contractual, as many of us know that already. And with that piece, I know that everyone will sharpen their pencils and put forth the best budget that's in the best interest of our students and keeps in mind the tax burden for our taxpayers. So I am proud of the work that has been done for this year. And I know all of us are seeing costs at the grocery store and other costs rise significantly. It's amazing, a district this size, we've been able to contain costs as well as we had. And I do thank Molly and your team as well, because these materials have gotten better and better. They are all posted online. The background information and the packets are posted. I, too, work and have four children, and I manage to get there and read them. And even though I've served for the nine years on this board, I learn every year. It's a full-time job to try to figure out. The process of school budgeting is not simple, not by any design of this board, but we have worked really diligently to make it transparent, and your office has really helped with that. The materials are put up there way in advance. Every time the administrators have a presentation, it's posted. The data we've received in the years I've been on the budget is just getting better and better in terms of we always have the enrollment numbers, the size of the classes, the courses. So hats off to you, Mike, and to Drew, and please tell Pam, because I feel really well-informed and thanks for the opportunity to actually explore and dive deep into the budget. It does take time. It's not easy, but it's transparent, and it's in the best interest of our students. So thank you. Thank you so much for letting me share a few words.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody else would like to share? Bob?
Yes, I'd like to just speak up about the budget. I'm very supportive of education, especially for all our young people, you know? And I'm a member of that group that no longer has any family member in the Exeter school system, but yet I'm so proud of what we do for all of our young people in the system. I look around the state, and I see school districts fighting the same fight, closing schools, laying off teachers, not offering programs that students need to go on to higher education. It's really a problem. The state's got to speak up, stand up, and support education. But with that in mind, Exeter is there for the students. We've been there forever. I'm so proud, you know? I'll leave it at that. We do a good job, and I'm proud of it.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? All right, appreciate those words.
So I'll pass these around for signature?
Sure.
And then grab them before I have to...
We still have to vote.
We have to vote.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So we still have to vote. So yeah, can we? I'll hold those for just one sec. Let's make sure we... All right, so the motion's been made. Thank you, Amy. I second it. So all those in favor, if you're in favor, raise your hand, say aye. We'll start with Bob.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, everyone.
I'm going to sign.
Thank you. So we'll get those signed, get those back to you, Molly.
Yep, so there should be four items there. There's a warrant, there's a DSB, which is the default, the MS-26, which is your budget, and then the separate election warrant showing the vacancies. So you sign in four spots.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we're going to move on to the committee reports. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go enjoy your night. Yes. Thank you, guys. Thank you for showing up and supporting us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So starting with the committee reports, the strategic planning report. I know that you have been working hard on it. The communication is out there. I've gotten numerous emails about it. I've been able to fill out the survey. I hope that everyone is, and it is at the library, grocery store. It is prominent, so... And I think that you got a chance to go to River Woods also to talk about it. I appreciate you being out in the community and communicating about that. So thank you.
Yep, our next meeting for the task force is the 20th, and that's where we'll plan the strategic planning, finish planning that summit, which again is the end of March. Encourage everyone to come to that. It's the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, which I think is the 26, 7, 8 half-days. So the Thursday and Friday is in the afternoon, and Saturday morning, there will be childcare and food served to hopefully allow as many people as are able to make those three days to come and participate. We'll also have translators if folks are coming that need, speak English as in their first language, et cetera. And we're going to use that data from that survey, as well as from the communications survey, as well as our multitude of other points of data. For example, the presentations around student academic scores, et cetera, to work together to develop themes. The point of that vision summit, I mean, strategic planning summit, is to develop the general themes of areas that our community wants us to build out into action steps. So that input hopefully should drive, I'm imagining, I don't know, three to five theme areas, and then we'll take that back and internally develop action steps and come back to the joint board either in September or October and present those action steps based on the themes that come out of that summit. So I hope to see people there.
Great, thank you very much. The next committee is safety and security. Erin, you want to give us a quick update? Okay. Good, we'll move on to the next one, which is policy.
Policy. You can see the summaries in the packet. There are four policies for approval and two policies for withdrawal. Unless anyone has any questions, I'd...
So I read the policies. They're basically around record retention, and they're very well-written. It's a good read, yes.
Who doesn't love a good record retention policy?
I know. I just, it is, it is... But it is nice to see that that's updated and pulling off the policies, so that's good.
Your summaries are great.
Yes, the summaries are very helpful, yeah. I did get a kick out of, because I think one of the policies is talking about tape. And I was just thinking about cassette tapes and... Am I keeping these on? So it looks like we're getting updated on that, so appreciate that. Do we need to accept those?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the four new policies and, as well as withdrawing the two policies.
Great. I'd like to thank you, Dawn, for seconding that. So all those in favor of accepting the two policies and...
Four.
Four, I'm sorry, four policies and then removing, withdrawing the two. Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. unanimous, thank you, guys. Appreciate that. We'll move on to the SST governing board. Bob, would you like to give us an update on that?
I have one little item. Seco School Technology is excited about the annual sneak peek event, which is going to take place on January 28th, 29th, and 30th. On those days, each of our sending schools will bring all sophomores to visit and learn about the opportunities at the SST. This will prepare them for applying for the SST in the coming school year. And that's it.
So Bob, that's great. Is this new? Are they doing it at night? Nighttime? They've been doing it?
We're just, we're making it more public.
Oh, excellent. Great.
And they added some, working with the sending schools, more accessibility to have all sophomores come. Exeter's always had all sophomore comes, but not all the sending schools, so they've really made an effort to get a higher level of exposure through this sneak peek.
And when we say sending schools, we mean Raymond, Kingston, Newmarket. So it's really a distance from Exeter, but they're all invited.
So it gives them the opportunity to come and see it. And Exeter does that during the day, so all our Exeter students get to see it also. So that is really helpful. Excellent. All right, I'll move on to the chair's report. I have two things. We did meet with Esther, talked about the superintendent goals. Our committee did, and it was a really positive meeting. There are just two things I want to point out, is that each goal, there's four goals, and each goal that we talked about, Esther gave us an update. But it's also what we all appreciate, we talked about this as a committee, is that it's really data-driven. I mean, it really is documented well, and this really helps so that when the transition happens, everything is... And Esther gave us many examples where she's working with Chris, going to schools with Chris, so that that transition happens. So that's a broad stroke. I can certainly go in more depth if you guys want some more individual stuff. You'll hear more about it in two weeks at the co-op board, but I want to let you know that we are on track. We're moving ahead. Again, it is, if anybody needs access to that, we'd be happy to provide that. My second update, I was asked to read a statement from someone, and it says, "I am so sorry not to be able to attend the co-op meeting this evening due to a previous commitment, especially since this will be Kim's last official board meeting. I appreciate Chairman Goethe delivering the message." But this is from Helen. So Helen is saying, "Kim and I have been friends for many years, going back to my days as an advisor for the YMCA Youth Government Program. Her friendship and her sense of dedication to all that she does was evident to me then. My husband Kevin and I so enjoyed working with her in that capacity. When Kim agreed to run for the Exeter seat on the co-op board nine years ago, nine years, I was thrilled. As chair, I knew that she would do an amazing job representing the voters, parents, students, and the entire community in the SAU-16, and she did not disappoint." I think we heard some of that tonight. "Kim has been a tireless advocate for public education, ensuring that the students served by the Exeter co-op receive a high-quality education. Toward that end, she served as a chair of the co-op curriculum and philosophy committee for many years. I watched as she facilitated those meetings, always with the utmost respect, while at times asking probing questions that would provide vital information for the entire school board in areas that are important to the programs being implemented in our schools. Serving for the last several years as one of the board representatives to the co-op budget advisory committee, Kim was liaison between that group and her colleagues, us. In those critical meetings, she always advocated for the needs of our schools, while at the same time looking out for the needs of taxpayers of our school district. As the chair of the board, I could always rely on Kim to be supportive of my efforts and that the entire board, but not afraid to be politely direct..." Did we hear that tonight? "politely direct..." "...and voicing her opinion on critical matters that came before this body." And those, indeed, she did that many times, indeed. "Her expertise and background were always appreciated and served us well as she represented her constituents with the highest degree of professionalism. Kim, you have an amazing, you're an amazing colleague. I miss our board connection, but I know that our longstanding friendship will continue, just in a different vein. You'll be sorely missed, and Kevin and I thank you for all that you've done for the Exeter co-op communities. We wish you well in all your future endeavors, and we know that you will continue to be a voice in the defense of quality education for our students, because this is who you are. Godspeed, Helen Joyce."
Aw, that was so nice of her.
She, we had a lot of emails going back and forth. My goodness, she wrote it so well. I said, "No, I'm going to say something." I was like, "Boy, she said it all, Kim." But Kim, she was right on.
That was so...
Well deserved.
Well deserved.
So sadly, for the first time ever, I am not going to be at the deliberative session because my work is taking me to Poland for 10 days during the deliberative. So I will be watching it.
And we, but we got some of your energy tonight and the perfect saying, and we are going to take that and bring it to the deliberative session for you in your honor, but you've done...
I know you all will.
I know.
You are so amazing.
It is good. So we'd like to honor you tonight, and you know, we've been friends for, what, 20 years? So I appreciate you bringing me on the board and giving me some voice. And you're still doing it, so as we text every week, and you are, we have the same birthday, we have kids at the same schools. I've always appreciated your friendship, and seeing you at this capacity has been wonderful. So thank you so much, and we have a card and some flowers over here that we were trying to...
Oh, gosh, thank you so much. Very nice. Oh, that's amazing. Thank you. Hard to believe. I appreciate it. So, so nice. Thank you very, very, very much. I mean, it's hard to believe. I was thinking back when I started sort of service, was with Dawn, the Exeter elementary PTO. Yep. And I thought we were in the hot seat then, a lot of times.
I know, and I was like, "You need to run for the co-op board. There's an open seat there." And I didn't realize it was going to be your last meeting, so I'm not really prepared. But I do want to say, you always, you always show up. You always make yourself available, even in all the busy things you do with your family, your job, volunteering, all of it, all over the place, and you're really remarkable, and we will miss you for sure. But this community has been better for all the time that we've had your expertise here.
Thank you. That means so much. That means a lot. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it's the end of an error.
I know, I know.
Well, and I do truly feel, years ago, when I thought I was doing the district a favor, when I heard through Mike Morgan that there was a vacancy for the Exeter seat, and you know, little did I realize that the district's really done me a favor and given me way more than I've ever given it. And it's a lot to learn and take in, but I feel like just immense gratitude for the education that we provide in this district, immense gratitude for the professionals we have in this district, as we all know. It's okay, I'm going to say a few words, so...
I knew you would.
I just have to, because we, the way that you care for the students, I've, as we all have, bear witness to the long days, early mornings, late nights, and other sacrifices that our teachers... that our teachers, our administrators make to give our kids the best education, and that means a lot in a day and age where a lot of people just look out for themselves. It's nice to be with people who really care about others and care about our kids and our, and our community. So to be a small part of that for these last nine years has been really a huge gift. Personally, I am very thankful for what the district has done for my own four children. I can never repay the foundation that my kids have and where they are today, and that's in large part to this district, so please, please impart that from me to everyone, because that's, that's a huge reason why I'm here, but I'm also here for everyone's child and for our taxpayers, to make sure that we can be proud of the education we are, we are giving to our youth. I do also want to thank you all, because it's not easy to volunteer in a time when we're all so busy, and we have families, and we have jobs, and we have trains we have to monitor on the platform. Right, that Bob last week, he was monitoring of the plane, and I was getting on the on track. But you're all so busy, and I, I really have gratitude for the time I've spent with board members from the past and from the present. It's, it really is an honor, and to know that I'm serving alongside people who are just as dedicated to the community and the kids as I am means a lot. And I know a lot of you stepped up when, when you were called and asked, and it's just, thank you, because a lot of people say, "That's something I'd never do," right? And, but it is, it is an important role, and it's one that I'm thankful I've had. So thank you so much, and I will miss seeing your faces at these meetings, but I'll tune in. Yeah.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, with that, any new business? Old business? Okay. So with that, we will, we are going to, I'm going to go into a non-public session. It's going to be called under RSA 91A colon 32A.
Right, that's personnel, personnel, sorry.
I think A is personnel, yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yep.
So all...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Charlie, nice job on the video. Thanks for doing that.
So before you go anywhere, we have to vote to go, don't we have to vote to go into non-public? Yes. So, so I'm going to make a motion to go on non-public. Does that give you a second?
Second.
Excellent. Thank you, Kim. Could you please, we'll start with Amy. Please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Now, do we have to turn these off?